Okay, we're all here and in. We should try our best to get going.
Okay. It is 7:08 PM on September 13th. I'd like to call the Carver School Committee meeting to order. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if everyone could please join us in a moment of silence in memory of Eva Piapi, who passed away last week. Thank you very much. And I will turn it over to Mr. Neef.
Okay, we're excited to start this evening with some recognitions of our new teaching staff at the Carver Public Schools this year. So we're excited to have some of our staff here in the audience with us tonight. Some are also attending via Zoom. And you know, it's just an outstanding group. We're ready to welcome them to Carver. So first, I'd like to invite up Principal Maestus, who's going to introduce the new members at the elementary school.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There we go.
How are you?
Doing well. Nice to see you.
I'm very excited to introduce several new staff members. Can you hear me okay? Is this better? All right. I'm very excited to introduce a few staff members, two of whom are with us here in person, Morgan Brown and Madeline French. And I'm not sure who's with us on Zoom, but regardless, I'm going to also introduce Amanda Rose and Cat Cramp, Catherine Cramp. So I'm first going to just say that we have had a great pool of candidates for positions available at Carver Elementary School. And it's been quite an engaging, interesting, and challenging process at the same time, just because we've had such a wonderful crew of candidates to interview and to weigh all of the pros and cons of all of these candidates. So the folks that we do have have already shown just such a great degree of dedication, flexibility, of the good communicators, and just overall a very positive approach to teaching. So I'd like to go ahead and start with Morgan Brown. Morgan is with us here in the back. Hi, Morgan. And Morgan graduated from Bridgewater State University in May of 2021, and she's currently pursuing her master's in elementary education at American International College. Morgan started with us. Actually, I've known Morgan for a few years because she has worked at Carver Elementary School for the YMCA. And you know, working with Morgan, sometimes late evenings when she was sort of overseen as the supervisor, I was really impressed with her because she was taking on some really big responsibilities and working through them like just a champion. And I just thought, you know what, this girl's going to be something. And I think she was 18 at the time, 18 or 19. So we had a building substitute position open up last year at the beginning of the pandemic. And I was really thrilled when she applied because she's just so adaptable and so flexible. She's able to just work in a pre-K room or a fifth grade room or wherever she's needed. So when a position opened up in grade two, when the children returned in March of 2021 for their full in-person learning, Morgan applied for a position. She became the grade-two teacher for full in-person. And then we hired her just this year to teach third grade. She works alongside Katie Lyne as a teen teacher. Morgan is teaching science and math. And we're just thrilled to have her. Next, we have Madeline French, who's seen you also. Hi, Maddie. Maddie earned her Bachelor's of Science degree in elementary education. And she also has a Bachelor of Arts degree. She's an art education mother. So she started her student teaching actually in Sandwich at the elementary school, the Old Bridge Elementary School. She's also worked at several other elementary schools for doing before and after school programming. So she has a lot of experience working with pre-K through grade-five students. She also did this really interesting tour. She went to work in Belize for a couple of weeks as part of a program that she was engaged with in Bridgewater State. And it was an opportunity for her to do a lot of observations of classrooms, students in the classroom. They spent a lot of time observing, teaching, working with the schools, and just partnering really to learn about how the students live. So we're fortunate to have Maddie. She's working with us in fifth grade this year. And she's a long-term teacher for us this year. Next, we have Cat Cramp. Cat Cramp is our music teacher at the elementary school. She's a graduate of Ithaca College. And she also has her master's from the Teacher College of Columbia University. While she was at Ithaca, she worked for the Summer Music Academy. She loves teaching voice. And she's worked with the Children's Theater Department when she was a resident assistant. She's very excited to teach ukulele at the elementary school. She's very excited to teach voice. She's excited to engage her kids in a drama, a mini-drama production. She taught both in Plymouth and Pembroke. And we're very fortunate to have her here at Carver Elementary School. Last is Amanda Rose. Amanda Rose is teaching in second grade this year. She is also a graduate of Bridgewater State University. She also went to Plymouth South High School. She's a graduate of Plymouth South. She started with us in August of 2020, last year actually. We hired her as a grade-one classroom teacher, but when things really shifted, we needed her to teach remotely. And she quickly jumped to the task and did a fabulous job. So she did her student teaching in grade one in Holbrook. She also worked during her student teaching in grade two. And she told me that one of the things that really inspired her was her grade-two teacher. She really connected with her teacher, and she just wants to follow her footsteps because that teacher loved reading, math, and writing, and that's what Amanda loves as well. So she also just wanted me to share with folks that she really is inspired by project-based and hands-on learning. So we're lucky to have Amanda Rose as well.
Awesome. Great. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Morgan, Tom, Morgan, and Patty and Cat.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any questions? Good.
No, we're excited to have new staff come on board. That's great.
It is exciting.
Thank you for coming to introduce them. Thank you very much.
And also I'd like to welcome Middle High School Principal Mike Schultz, who will introduce the three new staff, three new teachers at the Middle High School.
Welcome.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So two of our three new hires have had some sort of capacity with us before, either as an intern or through some graduate work, or held previous positions in our district. So starting with Jessie Alexo, who is here today in the audience. Jessie is our new school psychologist and the team chair at Carrville Middle High School. She grew up and taught in Mass and has been around education her whole life, volunteering in her mother's special education classes at the age of eight years old. She's worked with children with disabilities in many different roles since she was 16. She has a bachelor's degree in psychology from UMass Amherst and a master's in CAGS from Northeastern University in School Psychology with a concentration in ABA. She completed a graduate school internship at Carrville Middle High School during the 2019-2020 school year, and we're very excited for her to return as our new school psychologist. So welcome, Jessie.
Welcome.
Awesome. Welcome.
Me, a Mass alum too.
Brooke Bishop could not be with us tonight. She works a part-time job. But Brooke has been with us in the district since 2017, and she is assuming a new role. So Brooke begins her new role as the middle high school interventionist. Brooke grew up in Duxbury, Mass, and attended Roger Williams University and earned a degree in secondary education and English literature. She continued her education at American International College, earning a master's degree in moderate disabilities. She is certified in both English and special education, and has worked in our special education and English department since 2017. She's excited to assume her new role and support both regular and special ed students. So welcome Brooke to her new role. And then finally, Dr. Peter Jumper. Peter is with us virtually. And I should premise that when we set this up, we had the staff send some notes, a kind of a brag sheet, and that's what we've been working on. So I had to shrink this down a little bit, but Peter is a new high school physics and astronomy teacher at Carrville Middle High School. He is from Sandwich, the village of Forestdale, where he's lived his whole life. He's a graduate of Sandwich High School. He was the 2009 valedictorian. He attended University of Massachusetts for his undergraduate degree and studied physics. During his time at UMass, he began astrophysics research on star formation and interned at Harvard Smithsonian Center for Astrophysics. For graduate school, he attended the University of Toronto, completing his dissertation on star cluster formation and the radioactive feedback from stars in dusty star formation environments. You can see I didn't write this, see? I'm not sure what that is. He initially intended to apply for a postdoctoral research position with the goal of using that as a stepping stone toward becoming a college professor, like many of his mentors. While at the University of Toronto, he was able to participate in a few teaching assistant positions. Through these experiences, he found teaching even more fulfilling than his time as a researcher and decided to pursue a career in teaching. He's had the opportunity to teach at the college level at UMass Dartmouth and the Community College of Rhode Island. He decided he wanted to focus on teaching physics and astronomy at high school level and pursued his teaching license, taking courses at Bridgewater State University. He recently completed a long-term substitute position at Stoughton High School, and we are very excited to have him join our Carrville Middle High School team. So welcome to Peter Jumper.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. He's telling us in the comments that it's radiative feedback, and it's how the pressure exerted by light affects the surrounding environment. One other side note, in the chat, Ms. Whalen, who's another one of our esteemed teachers, is saying that it sounds like the microphones are off and they're listening to the audio from another place in the room. So can we confirm that that mic's actually on? There it is. Okay.
Could just be my mask.
It could be.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And also, we're not live on television, Area 58, just...
Yeah, I'm working on that.
Okay.
So welcome to all of our new staff members. We're really excited about the new group of teachers who are joining us this year, and welcome them into the Carver family.
Welcome, everyone. Absolutely. Wonderful. Welcome, everyone. Okay, we do not have any comments from the EAPC this evening, so we are going to go into comments from the general public.
Yeah, just as a reminder, and actually, I didn't do this at the beginning of the meeting like I usually do.
No.
So I should have. So just to remind, this meeting is also being held virtually according with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and members of the public can access the meeting, not on area for today right now, but via Zoom and also in person in the room. In terms of public comment, if you're interested in participating in public comment, if you can put your name into the chat now, that would be great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neef. Okay, so is there anyone that is currently in there that would like to speak? You can come right up to the table.
Do I have the permission to pass these out to you guys?
Absolutely.
So I just turned in a mouthful of the school committee, but if anyone responds, it's not a group.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have an extra thing you guys can share.
Thank you.
Put up to my camera so people...
Okay, so my name is Emily Slevin. I live at 179 Mean Street here in Carver. And I'm just here in front of you today to talk a little bit about Self-Shore Action for Hope. So some of you might remember me. I've been volunteering for a long time here in this town, trying to keep the memory alive of Zack Kane, but also to help all those who have been fighting cancer. But this year, I took a new adventure. I co-founded and opened a nonprofit myself. It's called Self-Shore Action for Hope. I did it with Suzie Golden, who actually used to work in the Carver Schools years ago. She's a Plymouth resident and a speech pathologist. So we opened this together, taking action to bring hope to families battling childhood illness and disease by increasing awareness and raising money to fund a research for a cure. So our first campaign is this September with childhood cancer. We have worked with the previous nonprofit. They were kind of changing their goals and stuff, so they gave us the blessing to move forward and kind of break away. But anybody who's, you know, doing volunteer work in any capacity is wonderful. So there has been some confusion in the community, but our Gold Campaign is called Go Gold for Hope this year. And what I have proposed here, just as the Carver, we have centered, I'm working with Mrs. Garnett now, not Mrs. Crump, in the elementary school. She's working with Ruby and submitted a form. I also am working myself with Mr. Schultz here, and we've submitted that we would like the Carver Public Schools are going Gold for Hope on Friday, 9/24. We're asking kids to just wear yellow or gold gear to show your support for those children battling cancer. Throughout the week, we're asking if anybody wants to fill the boot with spare change or handmade cards for hope for the kids battling cancer. We're working directly with Children's Hospital, and in this brochure, you can see exactly where the money will be going. It talks about the Boston Children's Hospital research for osteosarcoma in childrens of Dr. Mathers Moses. So we're working directly with Children's and for this research. So we will be able to submit any cards too. So that doesn't have to be monetary. It can be just a little bit of love. Plymouth schools are all on board too, and then maybe in future years, we'll venture out. I don't know if you guys have noticed, a lot of the sports teams are wearing yellow wristbands to go gold. We are not selling T-shirts as much this year. We just want kids to wear a color. We do have gold masks that we're selling for a dollar, the wristbands, which are a donation of $5 if you want. But with the school kids, I just made sure that all teams had them, no matter what they gave. It's not always about raising as it is about awareness. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody felt included. So I worked with the coaches on that. But if you have a team, a youth team that wants to, you can reach out. Our website for those who are virtual is W S S Action F O R H O P E dot org. And everything is outlined there, what we have done. And as you can see, we have some board members, and we're starting out. And we're excited to see what's to happen. We're actually, our second campaign will be in November for type-one diabetes for children. But we're here to hear if others have illnesses that they want us to kind of rework and research and do some funding for. So we're excited. So any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for all your hard work. And it's so nice to hear something positive going on in our town. So thank you.
I'm really excited.
Emily, someone's a yard sign. Do they go through the website?
Yeah. You can message me or get it through, message the website, and I have them at my house. We also are having a cornhole, and they're $15. And they're new this year. As you can notice, it says Go Gold for Hope, and it has a little ribbon with ZK in it. We also are having a cornhole tournament this weekend. Still have room for some people if they want to sign up. But even if you don't play, come down. We're going to have great raffles. It's going to be right here at Carver, the Sportsman's Club. So we'd be excited to have anybody.
Great. Thank you.
So thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Go right on up, please.
Jerry DiCosta, 71 West Street. The DESE sent out a letter August 27th, in which it stated, "Even for those students not yet vaccinated, the apparent risk of COVID-19 to children remains small. These factors continue to reinforce that many previously instituted COVID-19 mitigation measures in school settings are no longer necessary." A few paragraphs later, it, and this is from a letter from the Sandwich School Committee to the DESE, they are stating, a few paragraphs later, "Without any further reference or discussion on risk to students, the memo reinstates the mask mandate. In doing so, it states that, quote, 'it's an important measure to keep students safe at this time,' end quote, which is contradictory to the guidance provided earlier in the memo. The August 27th letter ties the potential lifting of the mask mandate based on vaccination rates of 80%. It does so with no reference to science or research behind an 80% standard, nor does it consider actual case positivity rates within a community. As such, it gives the impression that the mask mandate is based on an objective to increase vaccinations rather than a measure based on risk. All data suggests that the young are at the least risk for the effects of COVID-19, yet the mandates and restrictions placed on schoolchildren are more than are in place for the general public. Just as a student is expected to show their work in math and footnote references when writing a paper for history, it is important for government agencies to do the same. This transparency breeds legitimacy and leads to public trust. If we expect the public to trust and follow, quote, "the science," end quote, it's critically important for public agencies and officials at all levels to be as transparent as possible with the information they are relying on to make and implement public policy decisions. In that spirit, the Sandwich School Committee is asking the DESE to publish the data, studies, and references it relied on to make the decision to reinstate a mask mandate. And from the Journal of American Medical Association in June of 2021, "Many governments have made nose and mouth covering or face masks compulsory for schoolchildren. The evidence based on this is weak. The question whether nose and mouth covering increases carbon dioxide in inhaled air is crucial. A large-scale survey in Germany of the adverse effects of parents and children using data of 25,930 children has shown that 68% of the participating children had problems when wearing nose and mouth coverings." It just bothers me that you give them data and they don't follow it. I'm asking you, I'm begging you, follow the lead of the Sandwich School Committee and take this mandate off and write to the DESE and tell them to prove their point. Because right now, they're not. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have coffee, so will I just?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else that's in the room with us that would like to speak? Come right on up, please.
Robert Harrington, 26 Beaver Dam Road. I'd ask that you take an extra second for something that hit home with me just a few minutes ago. We all stood and faced the flag and said, "The Pledge of Allegiance that ends with liberty and justice for all." Just ponder that in your spare time a little bit, because I don't believe that we're necessarily completing that task. My planned comments. Good evening. I'd like to specifically address the behavior witnessed in our previous meeting. Feel it is clear that all but two people two weeks ago were out of line in comments, actions, and/or lack thereof of action. I'll start with myself. I would like to apologize for any crude language I used in my comments. I should have shown more respect when speaking, especially if I disagreed with you. However, I do feel it necessary to clarify that my comments themselves are still a fairly accurate representation of my feelings and those of many members of the community who have reached out to me since two weeks ago via calls, texts, emails, and even written letters via local postal service, thanking me and others for our efforts to stand up to you to fight for our kids' rights. Not my words, their words. I'd like to, second, recognize Jerry DiCosta. I want to thank her for her strong words and continued dedication to our children and their rights as American citizens. Your caring and your efforts do not go unnoticed. Also Andy Carterelli. I want to thank you for continuing to stand up for the rights of the children in our community. You've spoken calmly, clearly, made many indisputable arguments in the best interest of our children. I believe your argument that the commissioner's mandate is unlawful to be correct, and I agree that this is coercion and that we, the people, need to stand up for ourselves. Thank you for your knowledge, your caring, and especially for your bravery. Scott Neef. I believe your presentation on the law enabling the commissioner to issue his tyrannical rulings was distressing. Our superintendent should first and foremost have our children's education in mind. You should not be weighing in in any way on medical decisions for individual families. I would have thought a history teacher would see the signs of history repeating itself. It would stand up against government tyranny. I'm disappointed. Colleen Zanusski. I commend you for your questioning of the wording in the commissioner's mandate. I was a little disappointed to see someone with a legal background that I don't know much about. To not at least consider or second Mr. Carterelli's motion last week, given that the mandate itself here in Carver would certainly have questionable legality. We're not in a state of emergency, and to argue that Carver is currently in what I believe the term is exigent circumstances would be a difficult argument to make. Stephanie Clordy. You're the chair of the board. You're happy to restrict public comments to only be held at the beginning of the meeting, when we, the public, often do not yet know of what is happening, to speak effectively to the items at hand. You're happy to restrict our comments under the meeting's protocols, and yet you let Scott Neef interrupt and speak over Ms. Zanusski's questions when it was her time to speak in our last meeting. In my opinion, Scott Neef often seems to be the one running our school board meetings rather than the chair of the board. It often seems your mind is already made up when these meetings start, and I sometimes wonder whether you are listening to public comments or not. Jen Pratt. After Andy Carterelli made his motion last week, you stated you agreed with Andy, with what Andy was trying to do, and that you did not agree with what the state was doing. But you would not second his motion out of what you called concern for losing funding from the state. I have to say, this comment disappointed me more than most, because I think to understand that something is wrong and to allow it for any small amount of time out of fear over funding is exactly the kind of behavior that enables big government to rule over us, the public, rather than support those of us who elect them to their positions as were intended. We should not fear the government. Rather, the government should be fearful of us when they are not serving the purposes for which they were formed. We speak an awful lot about science, and I don't mean any of this personally. I have an immense amount of respect for all of you individually for different causes and thoughts, whether we agree or disagree on an item. So I'll close with something that's strictly science. It's a quote from someone widely accepted to be an expert in virology and pandemics by both the Trump and Biden administrations, as well as many, many more people. It reads, quote, "There is no reason to be walking around with a mask. When you're in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better. It might even block a droplet. But it's not providing the perfect protection that people think that it is. And often, there are unintended consequences. People keep fiddling with their mask, and they keep touching their face." This quote was spoken directly in a video with an interview with Dr. Anthony Fauci on March 8, 2020.
I'm going to stop you there.
Thank you for your time.
It's been five minutes. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak at this time? Saying no motion. Is there anyone in the chat that would like to speak? Has anyone put their name?
No one's put their name into the chat at this time.
Okay, so then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the July 26, 2021 school committee meeting. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the open session minutes from July 26, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and next, that brings us to communications.
Okay, we have two communications for this evening. First, we are excited to announce that we were notified at the end of August that we're going to receive a $20,000 Innovations Pathways Planning Grant for our environmental agricultural pathway at Carrville Middle High School. So I want to give credit to Meredith again. Meredith's been outstanding in terms of working on writing grants with the support of Mr. Schultz and the faculty at the Middle High School to support our pathways program. So we received a similar grant for this a little over a year ago for manufacturing, engineering, and technology. engineering, and technology to start the buildup of that program. So this is supporting for us to go through the process of having the environmental agricultural pathway recognized officially by the state as an innovation pathway. As we've got that designation for our M E T program, now we're looking to get that designation for our environmental agricultural pathway. So we're excited about that. So I want to let you know that we received that planning grant, and we're going to move forward. I don't know if there's anything you want to add on to that at all?
No, just I'm excited about the team that is working so hard to get the first portion of that application in in October. So just to recognize their efforts.
Excellent, great, thank you very much.
And then the second communication is we just wanted to notify the community that there is currently a vacancy on the school committee. So that vacancy has been posted, and the posting is going to close as of September 24th, 2021 at 4:00 p.m. Interviews are going to be held on October 5th of a joint meeting of the Carver School Committee and the Carver Board of Selectmen. If it's okay, if it's okay with everybody, I'll actually read the posting just because it kind of explains the process if the committee's okay with that.
Yep.
The Carver School Committee and the Carver Select Board announce a vacancy, the position of a school committee member. Massachusetts General Law 4111, and the Carver School Committee Policy states that board of a town may have the opportunity to state their candidacy. The two governing bodies will meet to fill the vacancy by roll call vote. For an election to fill the vacancy, the candidate must receive a majority of the votes, or the officer is entitled to vote. The person so elected will fill the seat on the committee until the next town election, at which time a member may be elected to serve the remainder of the term, if any. In this situation, Mr. Greenwood was in his last year of his term, so filling this vacancy would be till the end of April, and then it'll be an open seat for a full three-year term. So, and please submit a letter of interest and resume to my office, Carver Public Schools, 3 Carver Square Boulevard, Carver Mass. 02330.
Can you share if you've received any applications yet? I'm asking for names, just curious if any have been received.
As of today, as of today, we have not received any applications as of yet.
Okay.
So we're encouraging people to apply.
Okay, and that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
All right, since our last meeting, we have had some personnel movement, mostly all hires, and we still had some positions to fill, mostly ESPs, and we've been filling those. So I'll just go through our new hires since we last met two weeks ago. Gail Swansstrom, ESP at Pre-K at the elementary school. Christine Adamsport, ESP Special Ed at the middle high school. Anne Prince, ESP Special Ed at the middle high school. Jenna Pittsley, ESP Special Education at ESP at the elementary school. Michael Prince, custodian at Carver Elementary School. Michelle Richey is a long-term substitute teacher in music at the middle high school. We've also had a couple of people who've moved positions within the district. Taylor Ferrera, ESP from the middle high school to the elementary school. And Melissa Dubois, as a lunch model at the middle high school to an ESP TVI assistant at the elementary school. So that's been our staffing movement since we last met.
Great, thank you for that update.
Welcome to all the new hires.
Ready to go on to COVID-19? COVID-19 update. So just the numbers, the data from the State's Weekly Report as of Thursday, September 9th, 2021. The active case count over the 14 days leading up to that Thursday were 42 cases within the Carver community. The previous, that's up from 34 at the previous report. The average daily incident rate was 24.5 per 100,000, which is up a little bit from 19.8 from the prior week. And the rate of positivity for positive tests within Carver was 5.49%, up from 5.24% from the previous week. Last Friday, the Board of Health also put out some information in regards to active COVID cases. So on last Friday, September 10th, the Carver Public Health reported there were 21 active cases in Carver in 18 homes. Now, at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about, you know, how those were impacting the school. And so obviously, since we started school, we've been, we started the COVID dashboard again. Dashboard was first published last Thursday, and then it was published again this afternoon. So we will be publishing the dashboard on Thursday afternoons and Monday afternoons to give people kind of an update in terms of our number of active cases. So as of the posting of the dashboard today, right now, we have six students at the elementary school who have active COVID-19 status. We have six students who are in quarantine or in isolation. We have six students who have decided to participate in test and stay, and we thought that that would be important information for people to know, so we added that on in terms of the dashboard to identify those students who are participating in test and stay, or at least not the students, but the number.
Clarification, there was a lot of questions that came up this. So the second item, the students quarantined/ isolated, those are not the students that have an active COVID-19 status, but either somebody's been identified as a close, but someone's been identified as like a close contact to somebody with COVID. It could be a family member, it could be a student, it could be anywhere, but those, okay.
Correct. So those are three different groups of people.
Okay.
As it was, that's how we reported it last year as well, but that's a good clarification. So active is active, positive quarantine is they were a close contact to someone who had chosen to follow the quarantine protocol of staying home for seven days, returning on day eight, getting a test on day five. And we have six family members who've decided to participate in test and stay. They're coming into the nurse's office, being tested each morning, and if they're positive, I mean, if they're negative, they stay in school.
It goes without saying that anybody with an active status is obviously at home quarantining.
Correct. Anybody with an active status is following the 10-day protocol of staying home for 10 days, or until they feel better, you know, until their symptoms are reduced. At the middle high school, we have five students with an active COVID-19 status. We have two students in quarantine or isolation, and we have 11 students participating in test and stay as of today. We have one active employee, and we have one active employee who's participating in test and stay. And then district-wide, we have no cases at this time, no one at any status. The only, the thing to point out on this is, if you go back, if you go back to Thursday's data, so we published on Thursday, it was actually five active status at the elementary school and six at the middle high school, so it was 11 students total. So that number, you know, the town reported on Friday that 20, there were 21 active cases in Carver. On Thursday, we had 11 active students. So I would, you know, unless something changed, maybe a number changed on Friday, so I can't say it's a 100% that 11 of those 20, 11 of the 21 in town were students. But I know on Thursday, there were 11 students who had active COVID cases, probably of close to 21 active cases reported by the town on that day. So that gives us that comparison to where we were. When we first published this on Thursday, I did actually get, there was one question that I got a couple of times that I wanted to address. You know, some people were saying, were all these kids in school? We just started school, how come we already have so many cases? And so I'll say that not all of them had been in school yet, some of them were just, they were COVID prior to the start of school. The school just started last week. But as of last Thursday, they were home because they were isolating because they had COVID cases that their families reported when school started. So obviously now, that number isn't always, some people got confused, like, have we already had, have we had six positive cases in school in the last three days? Just because they're listed here as an active case doesn't mean those students were in school. And that is, that's the same way we reported it last year. You know, it's possible that someone became an active case on a Tuesday, stayed home Monday, went there Friday, Saturday, had no close contacts. Remember last year, sometimes people got frustrated because I'd say, we had a positive case, we had no close contacts, and they say, how could that be? And how could that be was that they hadn't been in school during their infectious period. So the numbers, the number is just the number of students on that day, Monday, September 13th, who were home because they were active with a positive COVID status.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So that's kind of my update on the numbers. I don't know if anybody has any other questions or information they'd want to look at in terms of where we are with COVID.
I have a question. How sick are these children? Are they in the hospital? Are they under a doctor's care?
That would probably be privileged, I mean, I don't think we have.
Are you testing them in school?
Okay. So does anyone else have any other questions on the committee about this? No? Okay, so next item.
All right, so ready to move on to science curriculum, grade 6 through 12? Unless there's other questions on COVID.
Anyone ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we're excited to have Michelle Littleton, the Science Department Chair here with us. And I mentioned this at the very end of last year, actually, we're going to, our goal is each month, at our regularly scheduled monthly meeting, to do a presentation on curriculum within the building. So we're going to start with all the high school department chairs, then we're going to do elementary math, elementary reading, and over the course of the year, we'll actually kind of do kind of a general overview of all of our curriculum areas. So we're excited to have Michelle here, who's going to present to us on the science curriculum, grade 6 through 12. So Michelle, welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. We have a really enthusiastic department, and we're excited to share with you what we're doing.
It comes up here.
So what we have here is an overview of the curriculum that we do. So our core courses, which is basically the required courses that students take, grades 6 through 11, those are all guided by the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks, and our state science frameworks were based on the Next Generation Science Standards. We also have AP courses, and those are guided by the College Board's documents, which are the AP course and exam descriptions. And then we have a lot of electives, which you'll hear about in a bit. Those have been developed by our faculty, who all have various areas of specialty in different sciences. Across all of the courses, that's okay. We emphasize content along with skills. So there's a set of eight science skills that are shown in the next slide that are outlined in the Next Generation Science Standards in the state frameworks. So you can click to the skills. We also emphasize collaboration. It's a, the Science Department is in charge of teaching the high school, the middle high schools' collaboration expectation. So these are some of the engineering practices that are just embedded in the science curriculum and engineering classes across the board. So these are just kind of the practices of knowing and doing science. So I won't read them all, but basically this just means that kids are doing authentic science. They're doing experiments, they're using math where appropriate, they're modeling. One example of something we did as a department in recent years was we did a deep dive into analyzing and interpreting data and how our students were doing that across grade levels. We looked at samples of student work and identified strengths and weaknesses and developed a guide, a progression of skills that we thought they should have, grade 6 through 12. So the, the middle school program is a combination of technology and science classes. So all students take integrated science for a year, grades 6, 7, and 8. So integrated just means that there's a little bit of all kinds of science in each year. They have some physical life, earth and space science each year. Our curriculum in the science classes is the CPUP curriculum, which is the science education for public understanding. And this is a really inquiry-based collaborative curriculum. The kids are doing a lot of hands-on work, and each unit is issues-based, so it has a real-world issue that is meant to stimulate the students' curiosity and interest in the content. Students also take engineering classes in the middle school, so we've had a really strong engineering program all along in the middle school. And, you know, we're excited now to have that continue into the high school, as you guys learned in June. But students take tech ed for one term in 6, 7, and pretty much all our students take it in 6 and 7, and then there's the option to take it as an eighth grader. And right now, I think we could say that almost all eighth graders will be able to get a term of tech ed, which is actually the gateway class to the manufacturing, engineering, technology pathway. We also just kind of wanted to throw in there that at the middle school level, we offered summer STEM camps this year for the first time. They're widely successful, there is a variety of weeks, a variety of topics, and there's anywhere from 20 to 35 students each week taught by teachers in the Science Department. At the end of eighth grade, all students take a science MCAS, which is weighted equally between physical, life, earth-space, and tech ed standards. So we have one slide for each grade level. We've got some pictures of kids doing what they do in the school. Scott and Mike are always saying, good things happen in this school every day, but I will say, good things happen in the Science Department every day. Kids have fun. But in tech ed in middle school, kids are basically learning some measuring skills starting in the sixth grade and using basic tools. Here you see some pictures of them doing orthographic projections. They begin to learn how to use computer-aided design at kind of an elementary level and building up. And then they do a lot of engineering design process projects. So the subbullets in blue are just examples of topics or projects that the kids are working on. So the Scale Home Project is a, is a big sixth-grade project some parents might have heard about. So sixth-grade science classroom, they're kind of building on what they've learned in fifth-grade science, the scientific method and measurement. The blue subbullets here are examples of the issues that I mentioned our curriculum centers on. So they, they're learning about hazardous materials, what makes a material hazardous? And in one of the pictures here, you can see they're actually analyzing this unknown mixture. They don't know what's in it, and they have to figure out how to separate the mixture and test all the substances for different properties and determine what their properties are. Kids also learn about cells, body systems, waves, and geological processes. In seventh grade, they start out, they start the year with their physical science, energy, and then they move into a variety of environmental topics. So learning about weather, climate change, land, water, and human interactions. In that unit, they learn about water quality and erosion. And then they finish the year with ecology, which is a great opportunity to go outside, start doing some field work, and learn about invasive species. Eighth grade, students study genetics and evolution, earth and space science, chemical reactions, and forces in motion. Right now, they've just started the genetics unit. They're learning about genetic disease. They, they have a case study of a young boy who may or may not have a genetic condition and, you know, thinking about from his perspective, what questions should he ask his doctor? Should he get tested? And through that lens, we'll learn about a variety of genetics topics. We also finished the eighth-grade curriculum with the Science Olympiad. So our high school science courses, our core courses are intro physics in ninth grade, and that course is a little bit different than how the MCAS is done for math and English, where students take a 10th-grade MCAS. The MCAS in science is specific to the one-year course the students are in in ninth grade, and we've had really good success with, with almost all students passing their ninth-grade physics class and doing well on the MCAS. 10th grade biology, all students take it, and in 11th grade, most students will take chemistry, some students choose to take another elective to fulfill their three-year science requirement. There's a bunch of other options, and many students choose to take four, five, sometimes six years of science because we have a lot of fun stuff. So this is our ninth-grade physics classes, learning about force and motion, momentum and other topics. Again, this is the class where they take an MCAS in June, so we see some students using some of the typical equipment that we use in that classroom. Biology, 10th grade, so this is our life science class, and students learn about, right now they're studying characteristics of life, what makes something living. Human anatomy is the unit where all kids want to know when they're going to do their dissections. So you have a picture there of students doing dissections to learn about the different systems of the human body. It's really just kind of touching on that. We have a whole human anatomy course that humans, students can take as an elective later on if they want. And students learn about a variety of other topics, biochemistry, cell processes, genetics, evolution, and ecology. 11th grade chemistry, kids always want to know if we're going to blow stuff up, but not exactly, but they do get to do a lot of cool experiments, looking at matter and its properties and changes. But they do get to do a lot of cool experiments, looking at matter and its properties and changes, looking at how the structure and properties of elements and compounds. And then looking at chemical reactions and observing lots of different chemical and physical changes in the lab setting. So here's a list of all our electives that we offer. Now, this list does not include our pathways electives. So we offer three different AP science classes, anatomy and physiology that I mentioned, two environmental science electives, and two astronomy electives. The picture in the bottom right, that's our planetarium. We're, we're just so lucky to have a fully functioning planetarium. And that picture was taken a couple of years ago when we had a community night. And then we just have some pictures of the field work that students do in environmental science. And then I, I know that you're gonna get a presentation on each of the pathways in much more detail, so I just have kind of a brief overview. But we've been working really hard on these pathways. We're really excited about them. I know that Dave Aruda came in and presented on the MET pathway last June. So this is just kind of an overview of, of the classes that most of the, many of these have been rolled out now this year. Really popular, a lot of kids taking them. And then the kind of skills and careers we're preparing kids for. And the next one is our biotechnology pathway. So we're in our second year of this right now. So last year, we started the STEM Inquiry Lab class, where students basically learn a variety of, of lab skills, hands-on, learn the scientific process. And then, right now, we have students in a second-year course for the biotech pathway, which is the Careers in Life Science course. We pretty much planned out what the other courses are gonna be. So even though they haven't been offered yet, the pathway is pretty solid in its vision. And the final pathway is the Environmental and Agricultural Sciences pathway. This one is still in the visioning stage, but we're excited about the grant that Meredith worked so hard to get. Student, the STEM Inquiry Class is also the gateway class for not just the biotech pathway, but for the environmental pathway, because there's a lot of overlap between these two subjects. And then the students who continue in environmental will take Principles of Ecology, which we offered for the first time last spring. And then we have a few other classes there with asterisks. Those are possible classes. Right now, we're in the process of identifying what, what the local need for environmental and agricultural careers is and what skills those students would need. And we'll develop our courses based on that. So I just want to say, we have a really great department. This is my twenty-fourth year in Carver, and I'm just really excited for the department. They're passionate, they're enthusiastic, and we're really thankful for all the support we've gotten from the town and administration for what we do.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Yes.
Yep. Excellent information.
I'm happy to answer any questions, if there's any questions.
Anyone have any?
Is there room in the, in the planetarium for our next meeting to be there?
That would be really fun. We'll have to think about that, for sure. It's, it's actually really cool.
I'll just make the comment that I'm glad you think that the summer camp was a good success, because my daughter attended it, and she loved it. She attended four out of the five weeks. And I, the stuff that she was coming home with, I thought it was phenomenal material. So I'm really grateful that we were able to offer that to all the students who were able to attend it. And the feedback that I heard from other families about it was all positive. I didn't hear a single negative comment about those summer camps. And all of the teachers that led that, Mr. Aruda and his whole team, they did a phenomenal job.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much for sharing that. They're gonna be so happy to hear that.
Yeah, it was great. And she was so, like, it was just, yeah. It was all positive feedback from not only my daughter, but all the families and other friends. Like, everybody really enjoyed it. So I'm hopeful that we can bring that back in future summers and that we can get even more community participation, because I thought it was wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll say one more thing before you leave. I, I want to thank you and all the science department and the administration and committee, committee members past and present. And people, we, we shall be really thankful that we actually have so many classes we can offer kids now.
Yeah.
For years before, it was, we were on a decline for a while. And, and the whole goal with the pathways and, and the science courses and curriculum was to bring those classes back and offer more to the kids. So it's very exciting. I, I love it. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. A hundred percent agree. Thank you.
Absolutely. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Michelle. Okay, we ready to move on to, let it to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education? So, yeah, Andy has proposed, drafted a letter that he'd like the school committee to consider. And I'll let Andy talk about it.
Okay. I was contacted by another school committee member from another town telling me about a letter that the chair of the handover of school committee brought up and some towns were signing on to, and they were kind of tweaking it basically to fit their own committees. And I can read it if you want, and we can, if we want to go forward with this, we can add to it, we can modify it. You know, if you want to go forward with it. So I'll just, I'll just read it again. "The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to whom we concern, the Carver School Committee urges the Massachusetts Department of Early and Secondary Education, Commissioner O'Reilly, and Governor Baker to restore school COVID mitigation efforts, including mask requirements to local control on or before October 1st, 2021. As grounds therefore, we state that local government governance is in the best position..." I changed the size of my screen. "...is in the best position to assess individual community needs and consider unique community resources that impact the risk of COVID transmission in our schools. The Carver Public School District, for instance, routinely monitors COVID-19 data for not only our town, but for neighboring towns as well, to help inform decisions by our committee on any potential community spread in the area. Our district has developed robust and successful contract tracing, implementing the testing protocols outlined by DESI, including diagnostic testing, test and stay, and full testing of staff. The district also regularly disinfects and sanitizes our school building and has invested considerable financial resources into maintaining or, in or improving our air circulation systems in each school building. We also have strong collaborative relationships with our, with our town departments, including our board of health. We strongly believe that local governance, including our school committee, can determine the best approach to COVID mitigation in our schools while meeting the needs of families and keeping our community safe. Sincerely, the Carver Public School Committee, Carver Mass." So that's the letter, and I don't know if... Move it back to the chair.
Andy, do you want to make a motion to present it to the committee? Do you want to just discuss it?
Make a motion and then discuss it.
Okay.
Should I make it, because I brought it up?
Sure.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to accept this, the letter as, I don't want to say as word. To accept, to accept the letter on COVID mitigation and local governance on COVID to the, to DESI and Commissioner and the Governor.
I'll second that.
I don't have a, I don't have an official motion written out.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the letter to DESI. Is there any discussion?
Um, I, well, there's one contact tracing, not trap, contract, so we should amend that. I like this letter, and I agree with the premise of it. I will say that the letter that the Sandwich School Committee, well, I haven't been able to read it quite in depth, but the little bit that I've scanned. I do, I do like that the, how the Sandwich School Committee is, you know, requesting Commissioner O'Reilly, you know, to provide greater clarity on the evidence behind their mandates. You know, I would almost recommend us adding some of that into it personally, because I, I think it's well-stated. But I would support sending a letter to the Commissioner.
What was the wording you wanted to add from Sandwich's letter?
Just even like, you know, their first sentence, you know, where they're saying they're, they're seeking greater clarity for the entire school committee on the information and science used in the development of masking policies currently in effect for Massachusetts schools. And then they, you know, cite a bunch of memos and things. And so it was what Jerry had spoke of during public comment. You know, where she's, you know, they're just basically asking DESI to provide support, you know,
For the decision.
For their decision and, and, you know, where the eighty percent comes from and things like that. And I just, I don't know, I kind of like it.
I like that as well, because it's asking, kind of asking for where they got their reasoning from.
Yeah.
I like that.
But, but either way, I would support even just sending this as is. I think it is basically asking them to give it back to us, let us make our decision for our town.
Colleen?
So I, I don't have a problem, per se, with the letter. I don't think, you know, anything's going to happen before October 1. I have, I, I don't believe it's gonna have any effect that they're gonna automatically restore school COVID mitigation efforts, including mask requirements to local control. That being said, I think the idea was to look at where we were at October 1. So I'll tie that in at the end of my statement. But this letter does reflect how this board originally voted in that we said we believe masks should be a choice for the families. This was based on the abundance of input we got back from the community. And having said all that, I, I am concerned with numbers rising. And I think all precautions need to be in place to keep things under control. You know, we had no cases at the end of last year, we had no cases through the summer. So I think what we're looking at is something totally different here, the Delta variant. You know, I'm not a health expert. I'm just saying, I think we need to have our finger on the trigger of where our numbers are before masks start coming back, or off, rather. Because, you know, there's not gonna be the test and stay option if, if a child is not wearing masks. So then they're gonna lose that much more time from school. And I just want, I want it to be a smooth year. It's probably an administrative nightmare right now. So that's my thought.
Okay. My thoughts are similar to Colleen's, where only, what day was today? How many days have the kids been in school?
Fifth day of school.
Fifth day. That was what I thought, but I didn't want to misspeak. Personally, I feel that it's, it's too soon for us to ask for the mandate to be lifted. I personally believe that we need more time with the students in schools to see how things develop with COVID. Clearly, I cannot wait for the day that we get back to a point in time where no masks are necessary and everyone can, you know, go about their lives without having to worry about COVID. But for right now, I just don't think that the time is right. So this is not something that I would support signing at this time.
If I may, I don't, I don't think this letter is saying that we're just gonna necessarily remove masks. It's saying that the state, let it be our decision.
I understand.
Okay.
Can I, um, I don't know how to proceed, is that, maybe I have to amend my, my motion. Jen, so can I amend my motion to add her stipulation of asking Tamira Sandwiches to request more information?
I have a suggestion, but you can, so I don't know if you, I don't know if you're right. You...
Oh, no, no. Go ahead. It's up to, she's the chair.
Go right ahead.
So I think the, one thing you could do is, you could form a subcommittee to draft a letter and kind of look at the Sandwich letter, look at your letter, and bring it back for the next meeting. Or you could look to, we could look to try and do that right now. But I don't know if that was a consideration to maybe have a couple people get together and...
The ladies tend to be better than I am at putting, formulating sentences on the fly. So I do, with writing things down, but...
Do you think you'd be able to, probably better if you guys took time to write it so that it says exactly what you wanted to say, but that's...
Yeah, I think it could definitely use some tweaking. And maybe by the next meeting, when we have a longer time in school, we may have more consensus on a letter, so...
We're, we're gonna have an executive session on the twentieth, which is next Monday.
Our next open meeting's in October.
And then we have the, and then we haven't scheduled the next meeting, but I was gonna ask those, you know, ask the committee if you wanted to meet on the twenty-seventh. Our next meeting, our next officially scheduled meeting is October eighteenth, because we, at the end of last year, we approved the meeting calendar. We only did monthly meetings, because in June, we were hoping that monthly meetings would be good. So, you know, I, I was gonna ask if the committee wanted to go back to biweekly meetings until, you know, at least for the next couple of months. So, so if we did a biweekly, that'd be September twenty-seventh.
That works. I think, you know, nothing's gonna, again, I don't think anything's gonna happen before October 1 anyway, so...
Well, you definitely want to get a day before October 1, because we're asking, October 1st and before.
Right. So then, are we all in agreement to meet on September twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to form a, do we need to form a formal subcommittee to put the letter together?
Yeah, I think you should.
Okay.
If you're gonna have two members meet, you should make a motion.
Two members isn't a quorum, so it doesn't...
But I still think you should, that's fine, that's fine. That's my recommendation, is that you actually make a motion for a subcommittee to draft a letter.
So you need, are you formally, are you rescinding your previous motion?
You'd have to stop by rescinding your other...
I, I, I want to rescind my previous motion.
All right, then I will move...
I need to s...
Second. Second.
Okay. Is there a vote? Need a vote, never?
I don't think we need to vote to rescind a motion.
No, it's a rescind.
Okay, so I will make a motion to form a subcommittee to draft a letter to DESI stating the position of this committee's, and...
How many members do we need? Just two?
I think just two, because if we have three, it's a quorum, and it would have to be a meeting.
Yep.
So it can only be two people.
I'll have to be on, if you mind.
Okay, well, we have a motion. Do you need a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so all of those in favor of forming the subcommittee to write the letter to DESI?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now who, clearly Andy? You'd like to be on the committee? Jenna, Colleen?
Why would you like to do it?
No, I have no problem working through the mud.
Okay.
I feel like it would be better just because you two have not, I don't want to say opposing, but it would be a better meeting of the minds.
Yep.
Awesome.
We'll figure out a date.
Okay. Okay, great, so we'll make sure that we have that on the agenda for...
Put it on the agenda for the twenty-seventh.
So, September twenty-seventh, please, and thank you.
Do we, we don't need to make a vote on that, right?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen and Andy. I appreciate you guys taking that on.
Yep. Thank you.
Are we ready to move on to upcoming events?
Yes, please.
Please.
Just, you know, we, we had done this in the past. We haven't done it since COVID started. But for many years prior to that, you know, it was part of the meeting. A standing item was just kind of a list update of upcoming events for the community and for the paper, the Catherine, and for the committee. And just to give an idea of some of the things that are coming up. And the reality is, we are doing more things this year, so there are, there are some actually upcoming events. So we're excited about that. So I guess if I was gonna point some things out, we are, we are gonna go forward with Senior Dinner Dance, which is coming up on September twenty-third, and the Senior Duck Boat Tour to Boston. Those are traditional senior events that didn't happen last year. So we're excited that those are happening this year on the twenty-fourth. And then we also have just, if you look at October, parent, teacher. It's, as far, as crazy as that seems, it's one of the fifth-day of school. We have two, two parent, teacher conference dates set at the middle high school and the elementary school. So those dates are on there. Right now, we are planning on having, you know, hosting a homecoming football game and having a homecoming dance on the Saturday after the game on the Friday night. So, you know, we have, we do have some things coming up that are more normal, natural events that occur in the school district. So we're excited about giving students some of those opportunities over the next couple of months.
Excellent. That is great to see.
May I ask a question? Scott, what's the, can you give some details on the, we're still involved with public cares, right? What and where is the vigil?
So we have a, a planning middle meeting for the vigil. Right now, the vigil is planned for October sixth at the middle high school, so it's gonna be a live event in the auditorium. And in essence, what happens is the vigil, is there's generally a few speakers. And in essence, what happens is the vigil, is there's generally a few speakers. We've had a wide variety of speeches, speakers over the years. We're all, we're all talking about the impact of substance abuse, either on them individually or members of their family. And we usually have at least one or two musical performances, you know, sometime, one year we had the Teen Challenge Choir, we've had the Middle High School Choir perform, so there's usually a couple of musical interludes, a couple of speakers. And then the actual vigil itself is, they've actually made a presentation of everyone who's passed away from an opioid addiction in Southeastern Mass since, I think, don't quote me on a date, to 2014 or 2015. And it's just, a collaboration that's been put together by the group. And so Carver Cares is a, you know, is obviously Carver's version of this, but the groups like Carver Cares have actually been developed all over Southeastern Mass, and they work in coordination to put the vigil together and do the outreach to get the information from the families, and then they all share the vigil. So the presentation, the video presentation that happens is similar to what happens in other communities. It's about 15 or 20 minutes, and then there's a little candle lighting at the end of the ceremony.
Okay.
So that's coming up for the, October 6th, 6:30 at the Middle High School and the Arts Choir.
Thanks for that.
Thank you for the information.
At the bottom, the parent teacher conferences, those are all happening on the 28th at the elementary, right? The evening ones aren't on a different day, I think that was just a typo, I wanted to make sure.
I'm assuming so, yes.
Okay. I think it was probably copy and paste from above. No worries. It's exciting to have some events coming up.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, absolutely, a little sense of normalcy. Okay, so recommendations from the superintendent, finance update.
I'll turn it over, Ron is gonna go over a couple of finance updates.
Yeah, hello, everybody.
Hello.
I have some, housekeeping first is your regular finance update. You've got three warrant signatures available, six, nine, and 16, they're both expenditures. And then the August 30th is our big fiddle of the year, kicks off all of our fears and errors, our technical difficulties. A note here about FY21 budget closeout, there's an adjustment there of $2,000, $3,697. No action need to be taken, that's just reflection and delays in some general entries that have gone through in the spring, they're coming through on books now, so, divided updated turnover of 392, 759, 57. No FY22 updates yet, no transfers there, we're still really early in the fiscal year, obviously, prep for COVID, and no major state or federal finance updates on the horizon, which is a nice change from the summer. Any questions from that one?
Anyone? Nope. Nope.
The other is just, it requires one vote, the committee is willing, and it's on your FY22 student activities accounts. Civil Master on Law, Chapter 71, Section 47, just governs all of student activities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'll give you a little background about it, and then certainly, you know, ask any questions you'd like. Student activities accounts are essentially funds that are student funds that are collected by students, for students, and a school district serves really as the custodian of those funds, their children's funds, and ultimately coordinated their efforts. Every student activity group has a staff advisor that guides and supports students. Each student activity program at a school has a coordinator who makes the school life record, so each school has a savings and checking account, and then under that, there's a sub-ledger of all of the activities. Obviously, the local high school has a ton of them, the elementary school just has a handful. So best practice is that annually, the school committee would vote the accounts and the starting balances, I included those for you. You can see in the attachment, you've got 85 different student activity accounts over at the Middle High School, and just 12 at the elementary school. I break it down for you in two ways. The first is just your summary for your checking and savings totals. You can see the breakdown of every single account, and then that rolls back up to equal the same amount that's gonna be in the checking, that's for the kiddos, or the advisors and the kiddos, ultimately call all their checks. The very last attachment, if you will, in your memo there, has the elementary structured a little bit differently, just because it's so small, you only have a handful of accounts. Their accounts predominantly just grade-level accounts, so kindergarten, preschool, and the first grade, and so on and so forth. The structure is very much the same. There's a savings account and a checking account, all of those roll up into the totals for accountable entry schools, and you can see all of those little sub-ledger accounts, the kindergarten, first, second, third, add up to total out, to total of the savings. So that's what we're standing on right now for FY22. There's been no request at this moment to add any new accounts. If we do have new accounts requested, typically I come before the school committee request that you vote the addition of that sub-ledger account as well. But at this time, we're just gonna roll the FY21 with your blessing into the FY22.
Okay.
Unless there are any questions you might have about student activities in general, or any...
Got any questions?
No questions, okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, though, to approve the fiscal year 22 student activity accounts as presented.
I'll second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to reports from the school committee. Does anyone have anything they would like to say?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to all of our administration and staff for all the hard work in opening our schools, and for our kindergarteners that are those teachers and ESPs had their first full day with students today. And from what I've heard from the community, so far, everybody is returning to school without issue, and the children are happy and excited, and learning is happening, and so I am very happy. It makes my heart sing to see that yellow bus come by and pick up my kids, and I know a lot of parents feel the same way. So just thank you to everyone who worked very hard to get the schools open and to prepare, and to all the parents who are doing the work at home to prepare the kids and send them off to school. I'm just so thankful, and I hope that everybody has a great week this week, week two. And that's all I have to say. I'm keeping it short tonight.
Great, anyone else? Colleen?
I'll follow up, Jen, and again, I have a third grader, and she was so very excited. There's no, she was getting her out of bed in the morning, and she's never been so chatty about school, and I really, and actually, all the kids that I see are so excited to be back in school. So I really think it's just a reflection of being in there full-time. I think, you know, we need to go forward, thinking, focusing on education, getting them back on track with our fundamentals, with the reading and writing in math and sciences, and push out all the noise, and be a good role model. And I also want to say, Social Action for Hope is an amazing fundraising, and I'm really proud of all of the work they do for our town in raising funds for such an important cause, so I wanted to give them a shout-out as well.
Thank you. Excellent. Andy?
I don't have much to say, I just wanted to say, I hope everyone has a great beginning of their school year and a great fall. We'll see you in two weeks.
All right.
Excellent. Yeah, it's great to see the school buses out there, it's great to see the kids on the campuses, it's great to see the kids out at games, out at practices. I so appreciate all the efforts that everyone across the district has put in to get school up and running this year in these challenging times. Now, the kids are excited, and educators are excited, and I just hope that as we move forward through this fluid situation, that we can all try to focus on the students. It's their success that we're all hopeful for. They're the ones that are in the buildings every day, trying to get back to learning and having some fun with their friends, and enjoying all the wonderful things that school has to offer our children. So I'm very thankful to everyone that's transporting them there, that's feeding them there, educating them there. Just a great thing to see the kids back in school, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to keep them in and have more activities added to the calendar every month, and more community events to look forward to. So thank you to everyone that has had a hand in putting that together. And with that, at 8:28 PM, I will call for a motion to end unless someone else has anything they'd like to say.
I have something else I want to say.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 8:28 PM, Carver School Committee meeting is adjourned.